Welcome. I'm Andrea Hobley, President of the League of Women Voters of the Woodbury Cottage Grove area. The purpose of the League, national, state, and local, is to empower voters and defend democracy. For more than 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been a trusted source for nonpartisan voter registration and education, and a longstanding witness to Minnesota's proud tradition of voter access and election integrity. The League's mission is to encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government, work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League strengthens our communities by promoting voter registration, conducting candidate forums, and informing voters on public policy through education. We invite you to visit our website, lvwmn.org, to learn about the statutes, best practices, and safeguards associated with Minnesota elections on our Elections 411 page. Follow the link to Vote 411 for a one-stop shop for all your election needs, personalized to you, including a voter's guide. We hope all of our candidates here tonight have submitted their information to the voter's guide. And now I'll turn it over to Liz Nordling, who's moderating today.
The Woodbury Cottage Grove League of Women Voters welcomes you to this forum for the candidates in the November election for South Washington County District 833 School Board. This forum is being broadcast and livestreamed on SWCTC and will be available on their YouTube channel as well as the League's YouTube channel. My name is Liz Nordling and I will be moderating this forum tonight. I do not live in School District 833. The League of Women Voters, Minnesota, and our local Leagues conduct candidates' forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. LWV Minnesota and our local Leagues post complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. The order for speaking tonight will begin in alphabetical order and will be rotated thereafter. Candidates' remarks are being timed to assure equality of time. All candidates were invited. The candidates participating in tonight's forum are Chad Borseth, Ryan Clark, Priscilla Dimbo, Belinda Dolez, Jamie Kokaisel, Anthony Marmoud, Satania Moore, Simi Putnik, and Molly Schaefer. We will begin with opening statements, and we will start with Chad Borseth.
Good evening. Welcome. My name is Chad, and I'm really excited to be here with you this evening. Since filing, I've spent a lot of time trying to capture why exactly. My experience as a special ed teacher, a long career as an engineer, and my formal education would make me a good board member. However, none of this is more important than my strongest attribute. I care very much for the best interests of our children, and I will not compromise on policy or practices that do not reflect their best interests. I will champion for a policy that supports mental health by advocating for increased investment in this need area. Additionally, I seek to strengthen our continued partnership with local law enforcement agencies. As a teacher, I experienced firsthand all these investments and collaborations enhance school safety and school culture. Meaningful relationships between students, parents, and educators are the foundation of a strong school culture. We must reestablish this culture. I invite the audience to read more about me, my family, and my experience at my website, ilikechad.com.
Thank you. Now with his opening statement is Ryan Clark.
Thank you, League of Women Voters. Good evening. My name is Ryan Clark. I'm honored to be a candidate for School Board in District 833. I'm K-12 publicly educated. I earned a Bachelor of Science degree in chemistry and a Master in Science degree in technology management. I'm not a politician, nor am I an activist. I'm just a husband and father of three boys who attend South Washington County schools, which are good schools with good educators. Running for the seat on the School Board is all about the kids. We've observed a shift in focus from traditional academics to a curriculum with political bias. Perhaps a corollary, but over the last several years, approximately half of our students are not proficient in reading, math, and science at grade level. I believe we can do better, and part of the solution is focusing on classic academic achievement to develop aptitude and to promote critical thinking. Parents know their kids best and expect a safe and supportive learning environment. It is my view that schools should remain neutral regarding social and political issues. A successful public education is collaborative effort between educators, parents, and students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now with her opening statement is Priscilla Dimbo.
Hi. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this. I'm pleased to be here. I've never run for any kind of political office, but I am running for a seat on the School Board because at some point you can no longer be a backseat driver or Monday morning quarterback. Everybody seems to have an opinion on how to fix issues within the public school system, but nobody wants to throw their hat into the ring. There are certain issues that are hot for me. One would be personal accountability for students, teachers, and parents. I don't think parents are allowed to be involved as much as they should be. As a parent myself, I have felt blocked out. I do think that we need to not focus so much on how people feel, but on the end result. We want to be able to produce good, quality citizens who are testing well, who know the facts, and who can just participate in the American dream.
Thank you. Now with her opening statement is Melinda Dolez.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank everyone for viewing this important candidate forum, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding it. My name is Melinda Dolez, and I am running for reelection to the South Washington County School Board to further the progress and dedication I've demonstrated these past four years. I'm a district graduate. I've had two children graduate from the district, and I have one child who's currently a junior at Eastridge High School. I've had one child in our special ed system, and I have a child in our accelerated program. So I have profound insight into our various programs and the challenges faced by our district parents. I've been an active volunteer in our schools and our community throughout all three of my children's education. I have over 25 years of career experience in social work, education, and mental health, and I'm currently a mental health therapist in our community. My top priorities as a School Board member are academics, mental health and special education support, equity and inclusion, and fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with her opening statement is Jamie Kokaisel.
Hi. I'm Jamie Kokaisel, and I'm very glad to be here today. I live in Woodbury, Minnesota, with my husband of 22. I've been married for 22 years, and my two children. One's a freshman in high school and the other one's a senior. I have a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree from MCAD, Minneapolis College of Art and Design. Very creative person. I also have been a professional photographer for 19 years and owned my own business for five of those years. My motivation to run for District 833 School Board began when my children were in sixth and ninth grade at Lake Middle School and Eastridge High School. And that was about three years ago. I researched over a dozen private and charter homeschool options at that time, and I decided that, once I saw how engaging education could be, it became very clear to me that fundamental goodness was missing from our public schools. Good grades, good choices, good behavior. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now with his opening statement is Anthony Marmoud.
First off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum for us. Thank you so much. I am a husband. I'm a father. I'm a son. I'm a grandfather. I have dreams. I have goals. I have dreams. I have goals. I have wonderful memories of the 54 years that I've been on this earth. I just pray to God that I'll be able to remember all of those things till the day I die. The one thing I want to stress is that none of them would have been possible if it were not for teachers. Teachers bring passion to their craft. I don't want to tie the teachers' hands. I want to untie the teachers' hands. I want them to bring that passion to the school district and to their classes. My name is Anthony Marmoud. I'm running for School District 833. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next with her opening statement is Satania Moore.
Hi. I'm Satania Moore, and I'm honored to be running for School Board Representative in District 833. I live in Cottage Grove, where I recently built a home, and I reside there with my significant other and my son, who's a student at Eastridge High School, where he plays football, basketball, and he runs track. So prior to that, I lived in Woodbury for 17 years. I have more than 25 years of experience serving in District 833 and Minneapolis School Board in multiple education positions, including administrative paraprofessional, family-parent liaison, and media specialist. I joined 916 as a family engagement supervisor currently. I have my bachelor's degree. I'll graduate with my master's in social work in 2024 of April. I'm running for School Board because I have been a staff member for 15 years in this district. I'm a parent. I'm also an educator, licensed educator. Mental health is important. It's a lot of things that need to be addressed, and I'm that person.
Thank you. Next with her opening statement is Simi Putnik.
Hi. I'm Simi Putnik. First, I want to thank the League and the Telecommunications Commission for putting this on. Thanks to my fellow candidates for being here. Thanks to everyone out there for watching. I'm running for reelection because I'm really passionate about public schools and really believe in their force for good in this society. My husband and I moved to South Washington County in 2002 because of the schools, and I want to ensure our board continues to put students first, really engages in good governance, and really focuses on issues that are important to our community. And those are really around student mental health, student achievement, and fiscal responsibility. As for me, I have two children. I have a 2023 Woodbury High School graduate and a sophomore at Woodbury High School. They've both had great experiences in our school, and I'm deeply grateful for everything that they have been able to do so far. I've been an active district volunteer since my kids were in early elementary school, from PTO to referendum committees, being on the district finance committee, and that was before I ran for School Board. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Next with her opening statement is Molly Schaefer.
Hello, and thank you for everybody joining tonight. My name is Dr. Molly Schaefer, and I am running for School Board because I am passionate about this district. I have a six-year-old son who is currently at Bailey Elementary. I have a three-year-old daughter, and I have one-year-old twins. So when I look to the future, I want to make sure that we are ensuring a good future for my children and all of the children within this district. I have over 10 years of experience working within education. I started with pre-K through 12th grade education in Iowa, working to promote STEM, and then I moved on to Minnesota State University Mankato, where I now currently oversee the Minnesota Polytechnic and Applied Learning Institute out of St. Paul College. I see the gambit of where we start and where students end up, and I want to ensure that we are ready for the challenges that tomorrow bring and ensure that we build the students' confidence in order to succeed in the ever-changing world that we live in, meaning that we have resilience and problem-solving skills. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our first question, and it goes to Anthony Marmoud first. Please give specific examples of how you have been involved in this school district in the past. For example, a site committee, a PTO, or a district advisory committee like finance or curriculum. Specific examples, please.
Well, I have no specific examples of being part of the school district. I have my children that were in the school district. They went from third grade to 12th grade. I love being a part of this district. I love to see what can happen and what we can do for the future. I want to see more math. I'd like to see more science. I'd like to see all the basic things come back. One of the problems that we have right now is we're not focusing on the basics. We focus more upon what is politically going on in our world, and we need to get back to some of the basics.
Thank you. The question now goes to Simi Putnik.
Putnik, yep. So I, like Anthony, I'm a parent in the district. I've been on the board for four years. Prior to being on the board, I was involved in CFAC, which is the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, since 2015. That's our district's budget advisory committee. I served on my children's school PTO from 2011 roughly to about 2019. I was on the referendum committee doing phone banking and mailings in 2013, 2015, and 2017. I participated in district lobbying at the Capitol in 2019, and I believe also in 2018, but I'm not 100% sure. And then I continue to volunteer as a parent, booster volunteer for my children's activities, and I've done that since I've been on the board.
Thank you. The question now goes to Chad Borseth.
All right. Well, I started my career in education at Eastridge High School as a parent. I did that for two years. I student-taught there. Then I was hired on to be a special ed teacher. I did that for three years. While there, I coached track for three years. I did one year as a golf coach. I also was an advisor on the student council. I was the advisor for prom, and I was the advisor for the homecoming committee. I also volunteered as a gaming club and ping pong club advisor. South Washington and Eastridge are very important to me, and I have very fond memories of them. And excellent leaders, excellent boss. Only the best things to say about our school.
Thank you. The question now goes to Priscilla Dimbo.
Hi. Actually, the only direct contact I have with District 833 is I do have grandchildren who will be enrolled. They were enrolled for a while last year. They moved out of state and they came back. I've been in the military up until 2019. I have seen various types of school districts and teachings and things like that. I have a smorgasbord of exposure and experience with other districts and teachings. My issue with that question, and it's not really an issue with the question, but being on the outside looking in, I feel that people who have been so involved and so entrenched don't see what the rest of us see on the outside looking in. And being able to bring a fresh perspective to this particular school board, because this is where I live. This is where I put down roots. And these are the people we're graduating, we're turning out, who will be affecting my life.
Thank you. Question now goes to Ryan Clark.
Hi. So if the question is specific about councils or committees that are part of the school district, like Priscilla, I'm outside of the school district as far as what my career is. I have volunteered for schools, specifically junior achievement and biz town curricula for some of the classes. I have gone to several classes, actually at schools outside of District 833 because I came from a different district. And I went to some of those classes to teach some STEM math and science curriculum to a lot of the students there. Essentially, like, what's a day in the life of a scientist? And showing young folks in high schools in particular, if you can learn this type of math and learn this type of science, this is how you would apply this to your day-to-day life as a professional such as myself. Also, as Priscilla mentioned, I feel, because I'm new to this, I bring a fresh set of eyes. I don't have conflicts of interest. I'm not involved in this, and there's nothing for me to gain specifically for running.
Thank you. Question now goes to Melinda Dolez.
Yeah, thank you. So I actually have experience in the district as a student, as a board member, and as a parent. I've been a dedicated board member for the past four years. I'm on multiple committees. A few of those are the 916 Intermediate School District Board, also on the Special Ed Committee, and the Policy Review Committee. As far as schools, I was the co-president for the PTA at Lake Middle School in my son's sixth and seventh grade year. And actually, the only reason I no longer did that is because I got a seat on the board and felt that would be a conflict of interest. I've been involved in booster clubs in the high school, theater, and choir, to name a couple. I've been a longtime volunteer in my children's classrooms, anywhere from kindergarten until graduation, including field trips, junior achievement, even if it's just cutting papers, different reading programs. So I've been an active member, so I've seen things from every view.
Question now goes to Molly Schaefer.
So currently, I am a parent volunteer at Bailey Elementary. I also have a substitute licensure that I have been able to have the privilege of substituting within the district as well. From those perspectives, that's how I have been engaged within our district. I will say as well, like Ryan and Priscilla, a lot of my work has been within other districts too. So when I worked down in Iowa, I oversaw 20 counties. Those districts within Iowa ranged greatly with the way that they operated. Currently, with my location at St. Paul College, I work a lot with the St. Paul Public Schools as well. And again, it's varying volunteer work, especially engaging with high school and middle school students, primarily trying to get them to see themselves at different pathways, whether that is a career and post-secondary education, or straight-to-career, or something else. So I think, like Ryan and Priscilla, I also have a lot of different engagement opportunities within different districts.
Thank you. Question now goes to Satania Moore.
So, like I said, I've worked in South Wash for 15 years. So having that perspective, coming from all angles of an administrative paraprofessional to a media specialist, to I also have my teaching license to teach in South Wash as well. Previously, I served on the COVID-19 Safety Committee for South Wash during COVID. I also helped teach our students during that time that were actually our needed workers, children. So I have a lot of access and understanding. I was elected official for, elected by the teachers at Lake Middle School on the site team, which oversees a lot of the policy, a lot of the curriculum, a lot of those things. So I have a lot of knowledge, like I said, inside and out, as a staff member. But also, my training in mental health, my training in education as well, gives me a lot of understanding of everything.
Thank you. The question now goes to Jamie Kokaisel.
Yes, thank you. I started, 12 years ago, I moved to the district with my young children, and I became active in elementary school with them at Liberty Ridge. So I was a volunteer for PARP, for reading programs, any chance I could get. I was, I also went to Biz Town, went to the zoo, was on field trips with the group of children that I was given. Then in 2021, well, when I chose to look at other schooling, I, my, let's see, I became engaged with the district through the School Board meetings. Much of the research that I have done is published on my blog. And so I've done a lot of research. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to be on any committees because I have asked in that time period in the last two years, and I was declined. There are some committees that I'm allowed to be on, but not many. There's only two. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to the next question. It goes to you first, Jamie.
Yes.
What is your position on the referendum questions and the technology projects levy? If any of the referendum questions fail, what would you propose as solutions to the problems that the referendum was intended to address?
Yes. Well, I will be on the ballot with the referendum, and so whatever is decided, I'm just going to start there. Whatever is decided, if I am also chosen to be a School Board member, I will also need to adjust and work with whatever the decision that the voters make. So whether I support it or not is, it's a good question, and I can talk more about that. I remember that with St. Paul Public Schools, I can see the direction that they're going with. So when I look at question two, I think, what does that mean for our bathrooms? What are they going to look like? I've asked the question. I haven't been given an answer. That one, I'm a little bit questionable, questioning a little bit. And if I am on a School Board, I will make sure that those do not, that if they are gender-inclusive, that those bathrooms are safe for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Molly Schaefer.
As far as the referendum coming up, I would support whatever our voters say, to be honest with you. We do have a lot of need within our district right now. We do have security concerns. We have safety that we need to address for our students. Above all, we need to keep our students and our staff at our schools safe. Part of that is also the overcrowding that's taking place within our schools too. So as far as having a solution, if these fail, I would say that there are other avenues that we can look at when we are trying to determine areas of resources. So I work a lot with different grants. I work a lot with industry partners. My job is to secure additional funding for students so they have these opportunities and resources available to them. I think it's important for us to start looking elsewhere, rather than always turning to our taxpayers if they continue to say no, and move forward with different solutions and innovative solutions to make sure that we're getting what we need for our students.
Thank you. The question now goes to Ryan Clark.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. So I tend to kind of agree with what Jamie and Molly had said. The voters are going to make the decision about these three referendums. And so, at the end of the day, if I am elected to the School Board, I'll respect that and try to go through and be prudent and, I would say, maybe somewhat skeptical of budgets. As a sidebar, kind of, some of the things I do is I manage a laboratory team. And so I'm given a finite budget, and I have to prioritize the different things that I need for my lab and for my employees to be able to bring that forward, to get the best value out of whatever funds I have available to me. That is an obligation of the school district and the School Board, to kind of view taxpayer funds with some fiduciary obligation to bring the best return on investment to our students. So that's kind of a high-level answer, specific to the three questions. Yes, you know, we do have more students than we have space. Yes, there are some security concerns. Do I really need, we need more technology and screens for people? Maybe not. But I don't know if we know enough about the details of each of these things to really make data-driven decisions.
Thank you. The question now goes to Satania Moore.
So first, I'll say that we need to have a lot of communication with the community. Because when people aren't knowledgeable about what's going on, they can't make the right decisions. We have to be, you know, we have to support our community. As a homeowner in Washington County, you know, thinking about an addition to Eastridge, I said, well, why would they do that? It's a new building. But looking further into that communication and finding out that the building was actually built to be a larger building to hold more capacity, and just, that's one example. Our other smaller schools, we do have to have adequate restrooms for everyone. And once again, everyone deserves to be accepted. Everyone deserves to use the restroom, no matter where you come from, where you live. Everyone needs to be included. So I would definitely support whatever our voters, taxpayers say, but I think that communication between the district and the county is very important so that people can make the right decisions to support our schools.
Thank you. Question now goes to Priscilla Dimbo.
Referendums, for me, being, again, an outsider looking in, just means somebody's trying to get in my pocket. We have concerns. When I moved to Woodbury in 2019, I did not realize how big and populated it was until I got here. So there's definitely issues with crowding and space. I think when the voters speak, as public servants, we have to do what they think is best for us. So that would be my number-one priority. But we also have to become fiscally responsible. I see massive amounts of fluff that do not impact directly on the level of education that our children are getting. So the referendum or not on School Board, I would be looking to what part can we cut out and streamline the process financially, fiscally.
Thank you. Question now goes to Simi Putnik.
Hi. So just to answer the question, yes, I support question one, which is the bond that would allow for safety and security improvements at our high schools and our middle schools, and that would alleviate overcrowding at our high schools. And question three, the Capital Projects Levy, that would create a dedicated fund for technology. A lot of this technology, this is not actually a device, technology levy, which you can see by watching some of the board meetings. You'll see that this is really about backend software. This is a lot about cybersecurity. This is a lot about putting cameras in to help facilitate security. One thing I do want to say is that, for those of you who may not realize this, the bond and the levy are the only legally authorized ways for us to get money in order to do things like add-on to buildings or create a dedicated fund for technology. And so this is really... And so this is really the only way that we're going to be able to alleviate the overcrowding situation we have at schools like East Ridge.
Thank you. The question now goes to Melinda Dolez.
Yes, so I do support all three questions. We collaborated with staff and the community with surveys and meetings. We also did another growth study, and we took the top three important things to focus on, and really also talked to the community about what they would be willing to pay a month, and we are still under that, even with those three questions, the two bonds and the capital projects levy. The question one is extremely important, to be able to get those new secure entryways at Park, Woodbury High School, Cottage Grove Middle School, Lake Middle School, and Woodbury Middle School, and then also having those expansions on our secondary schools that are at or above capacity, like Satania was talking about, the East Ridge was built to be able to build on, and same as Oltman, so making sure that we can have students feel like they're safe and not overcrowded, and then the capital ledges.
Thank you. Question now goes to Chad Borsef.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, yes, and yes. I have no problem with this. In fact, I wish we would have had this, this a couple of years ago. I think it's, is a much narrower slice at it, and I think we need to do it. Just look around, drive down radio, or drive down Woodbury, and you'll see that we're growing here. Molly, you referenced, Ms. Schaefer, sorry, you referenced overcrowding? Yeah, go to East Ridge sometime and walk through the halls during passing time, it's, it's quite a spectacle. The economics make sense. I mean, like, again, you know, we're growing. Security, yes. Technology, where are our SROs in our school right now at East Ridge? Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Anthony Marmood.
Okay, well, I'm a business owner for the last 21 years, and I've run into a lot of things over 21 years where you don't have the money to do what you want to do. You make it work, you figure it out, you tighten your bootstraps, and you, you come up with solutions. One of the things that we can do is, is look at our budget, try to figure out, like what you said, is the fluff. We gotta get rid of some of that stuff. I don't believe that with what they're doing right now for security, I want security for our schools, but I don't think the way they're gonna build this is gonna make our schools any more secure. We're just gonna be throwing money away. I think we need to look at different ways to secure our schools. Why don't, why don't we have the, the officers in the schools anymore? Why is our government not allowing officers in the school? Those are things we need to talk about, and as a community, we need to have our, our, everybody get together and talk to our governor and figure out what to do.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question, and it's-
Can I just add, can I add something? I just want to reiterate that the only legally permissible way for us to add-on to our schools to make improvements in the cafeteria, to make improvements in career and technical spaces, to make-
Close it to the mic.
Is, oh, sorry, to make improvements in career and technical spaces, to make improvements in the cafeteria, the only legal permissible, legally permissible way for us to do this is to have a bond election. We cannot take dollars from operations. We could get every single operational dollar, and that would still not be an appropriate way for us to spend money to build a building in Minnesota. Thank you.
Does anyone else have an additional comment?
I do, I have one.
Satania.
I just want to say that, you know, sitting at the front desk at Lake to allow people to come in for 14 years, that seeing that safety feature, actually using Raptor and, and buzzing people into the doors, having safe, secure buildings, where there's an entryway, where there's not walking straight into our schools, where you have to actually see a staff person first, is a safe, security, additional, safe way, and this is what they're asking for in this bill, to have our schools be safe and have that extra padding.
Thank you. Anyone else? Melinda?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, too. So to Satania's point, the schools that we want to add security measures on, it's so students can't walk directly into where the learning spaces are, they have to go through the office first, so that makes it safe for all the children and the staff as well. And with the capital levies, project levies, there's been so much cybersecurity breaches right now, that it's so important to get that done, so we can have more cameras, increase our cybersecurity, and have better back software. We know what's going on in Rochester, Minneapolis, City of Cottage Grove, there's something big going on in Vegas right now. I mean, we need to really make sure that we can get our cybersecurity under control, so we don't have these things happening for our students and our families in the district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Jamie?
Yes, I just want to reiterate that I have been very impressed with how the district has handled the referendum this year. They have asked voters, they have had many community meetings and talked to the community and found out what they want. So I will say that, that with question one, I know that that's about security, safety, that is one of my three top issues, is safety and security. I do just want to comment on safety and security, it does not only end at the doors, it is also in our school buildings. And so if we're going to talk about safety and security, then we also need to talk about SROs and the ability for our, our, our school board to work with our city and come to a mutually understand, and understandable, mutual, mutual agreement that works for everybody, because if this is, yeah, this, this is about building, but it's also about security, and I just want to call it what it is. I am very happy with the work the school district has done, and I have followed it very closely. I was, have been involved with it for two years, or since the first one did not pass. Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment? Yes, Chad?
Yes, to the, the idea that there's only a couple of legal ways to, to raise money. You know, it doesn't cost anything to implement cost savings measures across the board. You know, coming from, you know, industry that was fiscally responsible and manufacturing, there's a lot of low-hanging fruit in, in our schools, and we can find it, you know? There's, there's ample opportunities for us to, to manage our finances a little bit better, without always having to increase school funding.
Okay, anyone else?
And I, I, I do have, just to piggyback off of what Jamie was saying, security doesn't, it doesn't begin and end at that, at the front door. Are we, I guess, I guess my question for the security portion of it is, are we protecting our children from outsiders coming in, or are we trying to protect our children from themselves? I, I, I think that there is a lot of security issues, what we perceive to be security issues are not security issues, they're behavior issues. So having police officers, having cameras at the doors and all that good stuff, there are not Jeffrey Dahmers walking through our public school doors. What there are are undisciplined children and out-of-control parents. So I, I would just want to put that on the table, talk about low-hanging fruit. If people behave themselves, you may not have to spend thousands of dollars for a camera to see who's stealing what, or who punched who.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I guess I will, just for the sake of not being left out.
Yes, Ryan?
So I'm just curious, like, as an outsider, I don't know a lot about the inner workings of the school district, or the school system, or the school board for that matter, aside from what I see when I bring my kids to and from school. I guess I'm, what I'm curious to know is, with Melinda, right, so you had mentioned these different security packages, cybersecurity efforts, and these different things. I'm curious to know, how does that technology platform, those technology platforms that are being proposed with these referendums, how do they get scrutinized? Or what are the design requirements in place? Who's there to vet that these are the best software programs that would serve the purpose? That, is that a function of the school board? Who, do we hire somebody to know that? I guess I'm curious.
Am I allowed to answer again, even though I already?
Yes, I will let you.
Sorry.
Okay, so, yeah, it's, it's not a, a school board decision, that's management, and we have our, our whole departments that, and you, that each have their own area of expertise. So, you know, we, we direct what we want, and management then oversees that. So we're about more the governments and approving things.
Thank you. Yes, Molly?
I will just add on, since everybody else did. So I guess there's a couple of different things. When I think about the budget, I, I agree with you, Chad, there's definitely opportunities and ways that we can make our operations a lot more nimble and really fiscally responsible. When we're talking about technology, who will be overseeing the technology? How will these things get implemented into the classrooms? Who will be updating them? We know that technology is rapidly changing on a day-to-day basis. We're gonna be facing new, new challenges within our school district, especially when it comes to AI, and all of the different advancements from a local and global perspective. And so when we look at that, how, will we, coming back to the same question of wanting additional funding, I mean, I think we need to be very careful, because this could be a very slippery slope.
Thank you. I've heard from all of you now, so we'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Molly, and it is, what is the number-one issue that needs to be addressed by the school board?
I think the number-one issue is definitely the safety and well-being of our students. At the end of the day, the school board is here because of our students. We are, the district is here because of our students. That is our number-one priority, and to ensure that our students have a safe and equitable education, where they have what they need in order to succeed in whichever area that they choose to pursue. Primarily, we need to make sure that, that each student is, has a whole person. So that means understanding who they are, where they come from, and allowing them to start being vulnerable in order to learn. I mean, as adults, in order to stand up and say, hey, I don't know something, we have to be vulnerable. In order to, to cultivate that in our students, we need to allow our students to feel safe enough to stand up and say, hey, I don't know this, I'm gonna be vulnerable in this place. And that in itself will help elevate some of our test scores that we're seeing, where we're really falling behind, and that'll also help with some of the life skills that our students need.
Thank you. Question now goes to Melinda Dolez.
Yeah, I, I believe that the number-one issue right now facing our district is our growth, and it's really a double-edged sword, because it's wonderful that we are growing, and we're the sixth-largest district, and, I mean, homes are selling like hotcakes, our land is developing everywhere, so that means more and more students coming into our district, and it means less and less space, harder to deal with transportation, figuring out the boundary issues, having to do things like, like bonds and levies to keep up with our tremendous growth. But the positive of that is just how desired our district is, and that people are moving to this district because of our highly-rated schools, both academically and just students feeling safe in the schools, and along with that comes the whole safety issue with the growth. When we have overcrowded schools, it's really hard to keep those kids physically safe when they're in those schools. So that's a lot of why we also need to have these referendums for the bond pass.
Thank you. Question now goes to Anthony Marmood.
Well, the number-one issue, I believe, for the school board should be the education of our children. Are our children doing well? Things that I've read, a couple of things that I've read, we're in the 50%, 50% of our children, that's it, are passing for their grade. That's not good. I don't think that's good. I don't know if you guys think that's good, but I don't. So I think that's number-one issue, is figuring that out. How do we, how do we raise our children's test scores? We do that by focusing on reading, writing, math, science, hell, our history. Those are the things that we need to focus on. I realize that we have security problems, but there, again, I believe that's something that is apparent to our, our government, is, is doing that to us, and we need to get together as a society and figure this out. We need to be more open and honest with our, with our, our parents, and let them voice their opinions instead of having closed-door meetings.
Thank you. Question now goes to Simi Putnik.
Sure, I think the biggest, sorry, I think the biggest issue facing our district, and I'm always gonna say this, is financial. Everything stems from here. It really is what allows us to make any strategic decisions that we might have to make going forward. When we have enough money in the bank, it allows us to pay staff competitively, which can force all teacher shortages. It allows us to invest in curriculum, like our American Reading Corporation curriculum, that really allows us to dig deep on literacy and make some big changes there. It allows us to address the growth that's happening in our school district. You know, two years ago, we made $10 million worth of cuts in our budget, and it was really painful, and, but one of the, one of the benefits of that is that it's allowed us to redeploy the money that we were spending in other areas, like giving raises to paraprofessionals, and anything having to do with the budget really has an outsized impact on the influence in the community. And so I would say the budget is kind of an evergreen, always-important topic.
Thank you. Question now goes to Chad Borsef.
Having worked in the schools for five years, I believe that the number-one priority facing our schools is our school culture. Too many children, students, parents, staff are walking into our schools, and they don't feel comfortable. We gotta get to a spot where we don't need to have school inclusion centers in our schools, because everyone feels included. They feel good about walking into the door. They feel good about walking and being greeted by someone like Ms. Moore over there. You know, with school culture, relationships are strengthened, and these relationships are what the FBI says is the number-one thing that we can do to, eh, eh, enhance our school security. 81% of instances of violence in schools, others have known about it prior. I've experienced similar things like this, not to this, this degree in East Ridge, but similar. It's about relationships, school culture. Thanks.
Thank you. Question goes to Ryan Clark.
This is a tough question, because a lot of these answers are really good, actually. So, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, I think it comes down to academic achievement and excellence. I mean, I think that's really what we're about. There's lots of different folks. The parents who live in our community are, we're a diverse group of people, we have diverse viewpoints, diverse worldviews, diverse experiences. So when all the people are sending their, their children to school, what we are expecting as, as stakeholder in this is that our kids come out of school able to, to have some aptitude and acumen with certain things. Pardon me. So I think overall, that's the most important thing. Is the fiscal and financial side important? Absolutely. However, the cost per pupil has gone up, or basically year-over-year for a whole decade, and what has happened with the test scores? Now, I understand standardized metric test scores aren't the end-all, be-all of all things, but those scores have gone down as the cost per pupil goes up. So I'm not necessarily sure throwing money at it is necessarily the problem. It is a lot about culture, it's a lot about having parents involved, about having good kids, good behavior, good expectations, high expectations for our kids, for our educators and our parents.
Thank you. Question goes to Priscilla Dimbo.
Again, a lot of folks have said some things that are very, very important, but I do think it goes back to school culture. I, I think we have a responsibility to get back to the basics, because as a society, we were not always testing at 50% grade level. Back in 2013, we were testing 78% above grade level. So what changed has been the culture. We are trying to pick and choose, we're, we're trying to fit a private school outcome and public school income. We can't do that. We have to get back to basics and understand that not everybody is gonna fit into a particular mold, but the majority of the people will, and those are the people that we have to take care of, and then take care of everybody else, so that everybody feels like they matter.
Thank you. Question now goes to Jamie Kukaisel.
Yes, it's academics for me. My top priority is excellence in academics, and everything else falls from there, safety in our school buildings, and the support of parental engagement. But academics is important, because we, we, we used to be much, much better in our academics, and that has fallen, as is able to be seen by the World's Best Workforce reports, and the MDE sets these standards for us to be following, and we are not meeting any of them. Just to list off some of those, the ability for us to be ready, our kids to be ready for school, third-grade reading proficiency, kids are able to graduate, all of these, there's five categories, and we are not, make, we are not able to meet any of them. That didn't used to be the case. I think our, our scores have been dropping since 2018, at least, since we started introducing the Achievement and Integration Program into, and interweaving that into the World's Best Workforce. Thank you very much.
Question now goes to Satania Moore.
So I will say, it is a lot of great answers here on this board tonight, but every, it's not really a wrong answer, because the safety of our student is important, the funding is important. I think that if we have a larger district, we have more students, it's gonna involve more money. That's just kind of the math of things. But definitely focusing on that achievement gap, 'cause academics, of course, is why we're here, education is everything. But if a student is not socially, emotionally, and academically prepared to learn, they won't, they won't learn anyway. You can't just constantly focus on only academics. I've seen this for too many years. They have to be well-rounded in all areas. So, like I said, the safety, if, if our kids are safe, we don't have kids to protect, there's no education system. So we have to protect our kids. education system. So we have to protect our kids. And like I said, that, that goes along with all of the things, academics, socially, emotionally, funding, all of these.
Does anyone have any additional comments? Melinda?
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment on the few candidates that discussed the, the test scores, MCA test scores and our literacy rate. And just point out that it is not just District A3. This has gone on around the entire nation due to the different learning styles that happened. Since the pandemic, everyone's test scores have gone down. That's why the MCAs are just one thing that we look at. You know, there's many other ways to assess a child and see how we're doing. We still have graduation rate in the mid-90s percentages, so we're doing well with that. We do have a new literacy program that we are hoping is going to really help own that literacy problem. And also, when children, which we had 500 parents opt out of MCA testing just last year, that shows up as not proficient. So that all calculates into the scores of the MCAs overall for our district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Jamie?
Woodbury High School used to be ranked third in the whole state of Minnesota, and I believe the last I looked, I mean, the report just came out, but they're not third, they're 15th, they're 20, 25th, something like that. So I, I would beg to differ that all school districts or all schools are, are, are failing since COVID because this was happening long before COVID, our decline. I didn't know that about the, the kids who opt out, that those are, that's very interesting. But I, I do not agree with, with that.
Thank you. Priscilla?
Yeah, I'd like to rebut that because we might be graduating 90%, but of those 90% students, if 50% of them cannot read at grade level, we are not doing them any, any services. I have a problem with that mindset, that academics has to take a backseat because I'm 60 years old. I'm sorry. I grew up in a time when even those who were considered to be downtrodden were better educated than the product that we're turning out right now. I am a product of that generation. So the culture, we have a culture of students who feel like they are special or whatever, or whatever. And our job as a public entity is to educate the masses. That's our job. We need to educate the masses. So academics, security is great. They don't even know that they're, that they don't know that they're safe. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Anthony?
I just have a problem with, I, I always hear these things, these rebuttals about, well, everybody else is down too, or because of COVID, this, or, those are excuses. Those aren't solutions. And because other people are, other districts are down, doesn't mean that this one has to be. We have to focus on us and quit blaming other people and other things and saying, well, it's okay because everybody's down. No, that's not acceptable. It's not acceptable to me, and I know it's not acceptable to the parents out there. So that's just my thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ted?
There are some examples nationwide of some states that are doing some things differently, and I encourage you all to read a little bit about Mississippi. They've done some innovative things, and actually, they're, I think they might be the only state in the district, or in the, in the United States, that actually increased performance over the COVID years here. You know, they didn't get there by some miracle, as some people refer to it as the Mississippi Miracle. You know, this was deliberate, long-term vision and consistent pressure and commitment to delivering different results. It can be done.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure. I'd like to go.
Yes, Ryan.
Pardon me. So I was able to find some data that suggests the overall test scores over the year at grade level for students on the mean in the district. So it's certainly not something that is related to COVID, really at all. It's not related to COVID at all. COVID made that decline. It changed the slope of that decline. That is true. But the decline had been happening well before 2019, 2020, where COVID affected our, our society. One of the things I'd like to, to point out is, I'm, I'm in the forward-facing side of this. So the folks who work in the school district are really involved in this. They know more about the minutia than I do. But I work for a global company, and I'm seeing the global competition that we have to deal with every single day. And I'm here to tell you that the vast majority of people I work with from around the world have far better academics coming out of school than the kids that we are putting out now on average. So something to say, we want to be competitive. We want our kids to be successful in the future. That is what the public education system is supposed to do for our children.
Thank you. Molly?
I, I agree with you, Ryan. I think that there's definitely opportunity for us to really increase our academics. I think the core, the foundation, the reading, writing, math, that's going to be critical as we move forward. However, we also need to teach our students how to learn. There's so many different things that are capturing their attention, and trying to keep their attention is tough. As a mother of four, I can tell you, it's tough to keep children's attention half the time. Now, with that, I think there's also opportunity for different types of pedagogy and curriculum instruction. So if we have different experiences that we can help our students learn, experiential education is a great opportunity, hands-on learning, inquiry-based, project-based, these are all things that we should be exploring a little bit more in order for our students to actually get the skills that they need, meaning the core curriculum, reading, writing, math, and also be able to have the life skills, be able to go out, be resilient, innovative, problem-solving individuals, to be globally competitive.
Thank you. Satania?
Well, I'm going to say that academics is very important. I do want to kind of agree and piggyback off of what Molly said because the way that students learn, first of all, test scores are important, but in actuality, everyone doesn't test, everyone doesn't test well. Everyone can't articulate that on a piece of paper just like that. Some people are visual learners. So, you know, don't solely just base everything on the test scores. Being in schools, when you watch kids struggle, like, like, like she said, how are they learning? Is it student-centered? Are we listening to our students' voices and, and, and understanding and letting them tell us how we learn? I mean, it's, it's different. So I guess, I know I do have a different perspective working in the schools and actually working with the kids and watching how they learn. Some of them may just click the button through the test. And I'm just being honest and hearing what the kids, some of the kids will say. So they may not take it as serious. So I definitely have a different perspective.
Thank you. Simi, you're the only one we haven't heard from. Do you have a comment?
I know. I feel, I feel sort of vaguely obligated. I do want to share with people out there that, for those of you who don't know, the way that our elementary school day is structured, about half the day is really dedicated to reading, writing, and math. And so the other half is really where your specials come in, your science, your social studies. I also want to explain to everybody that literacy is really embedded into all subjects and all grades, and that's kind of a new focus for us this year. So that means that every class is going to be focusing, is going to have some sort of literacy component, including reading, writing, reasoning, and developing those kinds of skills. And then lastly, we have this new American Reading Company curriculum in our elementary schools, and it's really focused on the science of reading, lots of stuff around phonemic awareness. And the, it was piloted, I believe, five years ago at Nueva Zfronteras, and is now being expanded out to the rest of the school district. There's a lot of topic-based and student-centered, student-led inquiry focused around this. And the idea behind this is to turn students into readers. So there is a lot of work taking place in the district right now.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to Satania first, since there's already been a lot of discussion on this. Please comment on the safety of our students and what you would recommend to continually increase the safety of our schools.
Well, one, like you said, as you discussed, the safety of those buildings, the buildings have to be equipped to handle different situations. So, like I said, if you have a person from off the street just walking into one random door, and they're not met by a person, that's not a secure system. So the structures of our building is very important. So this is why, you know, all of those things need to be voted on, and they need to be voted on in a way that supports our district, supports our schools. Because that growing community, like I said, once again, the bigger the community, the more funding, it's important. Safety of all of our students and our staff is very important.
Thank you. Question now goes to Chad Borseth.
Yeah, this is the most important question that we'll get today, I think. You're going to hear me say relationships over and over and over again, and I've been saying it over and over again for the last five years. I don't see anything better, more preventative than relationships. And it starts with, you know, we have some dedicated administrative people that work in our schools that spend significant amount of time in meetings, not doing the things that they want to be doing, and that's out engaging students, out there meeting and being accessible to student need. You know, the, the security updates, yes, we need, we need strong physical measures, but we also have to have this school culture that supports it. For example, we don't want kids propping doors open because it's shorter distance to go to their car. So we, we've got to address some of these, these, these behaviors and the, the culture of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Question now goes to Priscilla Dimble.
Yes, again, I, I am looking at the consumer. If, if there is a big issue with strangers walking in off the streets, or somebody coming to take our children, then yes, I think we need to address that. But when I was picking up my grandchildren from school last year, that was not the security issue. The security issue was student-on-student violence. The security issue was apathy that I saw from the teachers and administrators with things going on around them, and either they were unwilling or didn't recognize that there was something that needed to be addressed. So I'm looking at standards of behavior. I, I'm looking at, you talk about the culture of the relationship. Why is it not okay to, to tell students no? Why is it no longer okay to have a standard that everybody can live, can live up to as far as behavior and citizenship?
Thank you. Question goes to Ryan Clark.
Thank you. So yeah, I think if, if security is a concern in schools, certainly making, you know, entrances difficult to get into our schools, hard targets, those, those make sense. But as Priscilla was saying, ultimately, in my view, this is something that comes down to behavior. We need to have high expectations for our students. We need to have high expectations for our parents. Our parents need to have high expectations for their children, right? There needs to be consequences. If, if, if children are coming to school and assaulting other children, the consequences and the repercussions for that should be severe enough to prevent them from doing it. It's, it's, if you reward bad behavior, you're going to get more of it. If you coddle about bad behavior, you're going to get more of it. At some point, the adults have to stand up and say, no, this isn't acceptable. As a young person, you are afforded this awesome opportunity in the greatest land known to mankind to come in here and learn these things from these excellent educators. You should take the responsibility for that. You know, you have this freedom, but with that freedom comes this responsibility. I would like to see more discipline in the children, ultimately.
Thank you. Question goes to Molly Schaefer.
So I think a lot of the candidates up here with me make great points, and I, I agree with a lot of what they're saying. You know, to, to all of that, I think relationships are a big thing. But I also think the relationships go further than just in the school. So I think, yes, we need to build the relationships with our students, but we also need to have our educators, our staff, any sort of person within the district that comes in contact with our students, need to start building that relationship. And, and we need to hold one another accountable to that. We need to hold students accountable, but we also need to hold our, our staff and educators accountable to build those relationships, to make it a safe learning environment and a safe place for our students to come in. I also think the community should also be more involved with what we're doing. I think sometimes there's not a lot of communication that gets conveyed to the community, and at the end of the day, it does take a village, right? We are all here to support the students, and if we want to make sure that they are safe and secure, part of that is involving all of us and making sure that we are all moving forward in the right direction to build those relationships and keep everybody safe.
Thank you. Question now goes to Jamie Kukaisel.
Yes, I, I'm just going to piggyback on what Priscilla and Ryan have said, so I need, I don't need to say that anymore, but I'll just talk about disciplinary incidents reports have gone up. That's insubordination and fighting in our school district, across, across the state, actually. I remember listening to a board meeting where we were talking about discipline, or we were talking about, the DEI officer was in here, the, he was talking about that social-emotional learning and I think culturally responsive training was supposed to be teaching our kids more about how to handle their behaviors. I guess, I'm just wondering, that doesn't seem to be working so well. However, I would want to look at that a little more. All I know is that it's a lot more than just building security and doors because with our, with all the reports that, that I'm seeing and what I'm seeing and hearing, the teachers talking and the parents talking, it's more inside schools.
Question now goes to Melinda Dole's.
Yeah, so safety is really everyone's responsibility, and it's a really multifaceted thing. And our, good relations are really key, and it's kind of one of those things where if you see something, you say something. And we've already talked about, you know, the question one for safety and the question three for safety. But really, safety encompasses physical and emotional safety. So, you know, feeling a positive school climate, that includes, you know, inclusion, enhanced mental health services, is also going to help our students feel safe. And then also just continuing to ensure that our staff receive regular training, professional development on safety protocols, inclusivity, knowing their responsibility to report things when they see things and following through on that. And also just making sure that we are teaching or focusing on that social-emotional learning as well, because that teaches kids to recognize and manage their emotions.
Thank you. The question now goes to Anthony Marmood.
So, we can go ahead and we can spend millions of dollars building glass doors and glass windows and glass this. If somebody wants to get in, they're going to come in. The problem that we have with our schools is not the people coming in from the outside, it's the kids we have on the inside. Their emotional and mental development is so far behind because we coddle them. We need to start taking care of our children. We need to start educating our parents on how to take care of the children. That seems to be the problem. These kids don't have any fear. They don't listen to you. They don't think that they have to do anything. We need our parents to step up as well. That's something that we have to really look at, is the, the emotional well-being of our children starts at home. And at home is where we need to focus to get the violence out of our schools.
Thank you. Question now goes to Simi.
Sure. One of the things I'm hearing here, and if you listen to how we sound, it sounds like our schools are some sort of like Mad Max dystopian hellscape, and they're not. Our schools are by and large safe, and our students are by and large safe. And like Melinda said, we have a multifaceted approach that helps keep students safe. Safety is everyone's responsibility about, you know, when we've surveyed our students, about 90% of our students report having a relationship with an adult in the school that they feel is someone that they can go to or they can talk to when they have an issue. And that's really, you know, like Chad said, one of the foundations of what keeps our schools safe. We have tip lines. We have procedure where students can report anonymously, you know, but we really do rely on the community when they see something on social media or when they see something, they hear a rumor from their kid, you know, they really need to, to let us know because we can't be everywhere. We do do regular trainings and professional development around safety. We've got a great leader in Napoleon Genaru who helps design kind of what our protocols look like internally. And we've got, you know, really, you know, our students aren't misbehaving all the time. There are some students who do and some who don't. Most don't.
Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Satania?
I'll just piggyback a little bit off of what they were talking about as far as kids' behaviors in school. This behavior really does start at home. It starts at home. So imagine you have all these students coming together with different beliefs, different norms, different behaviors in school in one place where you want to add, it's kind of like throwing fuel. You want to add the internet. You want to add social media, the apps, all of the things that the kids are engaged in. And then you have parents, and I'm speaking firsthand, because I've had kids say, parents say, I don't even have the, the code to my, my kid's phone. Okay, well, you don't understand really what's going on with your, with your own kid. And it's not for you to send your, to the teacher to explain what your behavior must look like. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment? Then we'll move on to, Jamie?
Just really quick, I agree with that parents are a child's first teacher, that we need to be uplifting them and encouraging them to be involved. I do not feel I do not feel like we, I necessarily was allowed to be involved once I got to the secondary education level. And in fact, since I've been doing more and more research on the violence prevention curriculum, flash curriculum, and I feel like, and I've read a lot of books that, that the kids are reading in school, and it, it's, it's not what I would be teaching my kids about violence.
Thank you. Anyone else with an additional comment? And we'll move on to the next question, and it goes to Simi first. What strategies will you implement to enhance and expand mental health services for the students in our schools?
So, mental health is a big crisis for our, for our students. And if you look at the 2022 Minnesota Student Survey, you can read exactly in South Washington County how, how much our students have suffered. And about 50%, almost 50% of 11th grade girls, for example, in our school district, identified as having mental health issues. 50% of our 11th graders said that they didn't feel good about themselves. That 60% of the girls said that. 70% of our 11th graders reported anxiety, so this is really quite a crisis. What we've done this year is we've added additional mental health staffing across our schools. We also have a lot of internal work that we do with LE Family Services and the Youth Service Bureau that come into our schools and can help see students during the school day and help remove some of the barriers around transportation or scheduling. Our internal mental health team can include psychologists, social workers, cultural liaisons, administrators, academic success coaches, and really kind of help do wraparound services for the whole child in order to help them be healthier.
Thank you. The question now goes to Jamie Kokizel.
Can you just say it one more time?
What strategies will you implement to enhance and expand mental health services for the students in our schools?
Yes, well, I've looked a little bit into the mental health, a little bit, but I just want to get back to reading, writing, and math.
Could you answer the question that I asked?
Well, what it is, so, mental health, we can, we can throw lots of options. We can throw lots of programs and money at mental health in our public schools. But when we, what's best for a child in our schools? What, what's the function of a school district? It's to educate our children. So supplying that information to parents and caregivers, great. Let's help them to help their children with their mental health. But as a school district, I believe our number one goal is to educate them in academics. And once we do that and we hold them up to this high standard, and again, there, this is a much longer answer than just, than I have in, in one minute. But, I mean, mental health is a huge issue, and we need to address it. I definitely agree with that. But I do think that we are obligated to teaching the basics.
Thank you. Question now goes to Anthony Marmood.
Mental health, well, I have a campaign manager that was a mental health teacher in this district, and they gave the classrooms a choice of having more pairs in the classroom or having, they could have three people help them in the classrooms or just the one mental health teacher. So they were giving the choice. Well, if you're a teacher, once you're, you really want to have people to help you, don't you? I mean, that's, that's what you want. So I don't understand how you're saying we are adding more mental health people to the school when we're actually getting rid of them. I believe that mental health, again, starts in the home. And as a school district, like Jamie said, we need to focus on the basics, get back to them. We, we need to definitely figure out something for mental health, but I think that could be the state level and getting parents the help that they need to take care of their children properly.
Thank you. Question now goes to Satania Moore.
So, being a youth mental health first aid instructor in District 916, I actually helped teach the teachers and the teachers assistants how to identify mental health disorders. So I think by adding more training for some teachers, you know, because that's not a part directly of the education curriculum to teach directly how to identify different things with mental health. So I think they're helping our teachers and staff learn more about what that looks like because if a student has a disorder, it may be impossible for them to learn. It may be impossible for them to learn like other students in that classroom, so then you'll need accommodations for that particular student. And then accommodations require additional staffing in that classroom because a lot of kids may have accommodations. So these are things that you may want to address with that, not just, it will start at home, of course, but it may be identified at school and then addressed at school.
Thank you. Question goes to Priscilla Dimbo.
I'm, I'm gonna, there's a saying, and I'm going to misquote it. Hard times make strong men. Strong men make soft times. Soft times make weak men. Weak men make hard times. I think the biggest help for mental health, what we are calling mental health, because we really do need to examine that term, the biggest help to mental health is achievement. Too many of our children are focused inward, and they're not given the opportunity to discover what they excel at. They're not pushed to, to, to achieve excellence. So, yeah, they're feeling sorry for themselves. The music they listen to makes me want to throw myself off a curb. I understand. But we need to get back to the academics and teaching children. Not everybody is going to be able to play baseball. But the kid who can't play baseball might be a great artist. Mental health starts with achievement.
Thank you. Question now goes to Molly Schaefer.
I think that mental health, I think there's a great deal of opportunity with mental health training. I know from the university where I work, we all have gone through mental health training 101, and that has helped just as we navigate and work with our students on a daily basis, just to be able to identify and make sure that our students are actually getting what they need. Because sometimes they're not able to communicate what is actually going on within them, within their heads and how they're feeling. So that's, that's the first piece. I think the mental health training would be something that we really need to adopt and look into more. My other, the other piece of this is, again, approaching it from a whole person perspective, making sure that we understand who our students are and really diving into who they are. I mean, there's layers to people that they're not going to expose themselves right away. So working to build those relationships, again, that'll help with the safety as well within our schools. There's cyber, cyberbullying that's taking place outside of the schools. And I will just say, as a product of, I, I graduated from St. Paul Central. Parents are not always involved or engaged, and I still see that today.
Thank you. Question now goes to Ryan Clark.
Hello, thank you. So I have kind of mixed feelings on this one. In some respects, I think mental health is a medical issue, and as a result of that, it's mostly the purview of the parents. I am concerned if school districts are keeping, you know, medical data, personal data on children. I think there's some concern to be had there. I think what I want to know is what's the root cause of the mental health crisis that we face? Because it is a real thing, and so I'm not trying to, to deny it. It's, it's a real serious issue. So what's the root cause? I would offer, in my view at least, that having a society that's constantly focused on all these political issues and divisiveness all of the time is a driver of that. Our kids are exposed constantly to not, non-age-appropriate content all the time. They're on screens all the time. They are bickering with each other all the time. They're listening to vulgar music all the time, watching movies and, and things that they shouldn't be watching and exposed to things they shouldn't be exposed to. And as a consequence, because they are focused on themselves and really narcissistic in some respects with some people, then you, this becomes an issue where this mental health bleeds over into the public school district, and then it's not really the, the school board's purview specifically to solve that anyway.
Thank you. Question goes to Chad Borseth.
Did I say relationships yet? I think, yeah, I'm going to keep saying that. I'm going to bounce away. We need to stabilize our routines, you know, at school. I mean, the pandemic basically destroyed all our routines, you know. Become, going to school, it kind of became optional. Well, we're still there. You know, I mean, our, our, our attendance in, in schools is dire. And I'm not, I'm not just talking about getting to school. I'm talking about going to class once you're at school. Okay, chemical health, social, what can we do for mental health? Well, social workers, I worked with one of the best at East Ridge for over five years. Chemical health, our students, there's a crisis. You know, they're addicted to vapes, they're addicted to nicotine. Now with marijuana, we got an increased demand. Chemical health is very important. I've had a number of children that have come up and said, I just don't feel good. It makes me feel better. Terrible. Phone use, there's growing body evidence that suggests that this is very harmful to young adults. I think 40% of young females that go on to Instagram feel worse about themselves. We can't control their 5G, but we can control our Wi-Fi in school. Let's block them.
Thank you. Question goes to Melinda Dolez.
Yes, I agree, relationships are a huge important part in our schools. But mental health has really increased across the whole nation, and it is a big issue. It's such a big issue. It's why I went back to grad school to become a mental health professional so I can help, help our community in, in some mental health ways. But like Simi said, we do have, we've hired several more social workers in our elementary schools this year. And then we do have a whole team that includes our psychologist, our social worker, our cultural liaisons, administration, our academic success coaches. So we have a whole team that's really working with these students. I believe that offering mental health services in schools is, is a good thing because it increases accessibility of care for students who might face barriers to getting that care outside of the school. And when they're not getting that outside of the school, then they're bringing that into the school. They're missing out on things. They're, it's also affecting their grades, and it's also affecting the learning of other students. So comprehensive services in our schools helps address those barriers to learning and providing supports to our students.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Satania.
I just want to say that, you know, Ryan, I think, had mentioned about, you know, where did the, this mental health thing came from? It came from COVID. It came from trauma. It came from abuse. It came from these, the families that are, that are everywhere. I think trauma touches everybody, everyone's family. So kids come to school and they act out. I agree. It, it involves the, the, the phones. It involves all of those different things. But we have to keep these things into consideration and actually help our students and address those issues.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chad?
Yeah, Ms. Moore is exactly right. I mean, there's a lot we can do, starting with, you know, giving teachers more opportunities to mentor, whether that's incentivizing people to do things on their prep. Just another, you know, our counselors, I think, at East Ridge, we're at about 300 to each counselor. You're not going to really create any meaningful relationships with 300 students. We need to make an investment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jamie?
Just really quick, I just don't think that our school district should be expected to do everything. And I think that that's where the, the family comes in, the importance of the parental units. And I think that working with families a little closer in this capacity is, is, is a, could be an extension of the school out in the community in a way that's very valuable and helps parents. Because once you start getting parents involved, I mean, they are another resource that we can use to, to handle this mental health crisis.
Thank you. Molly?
I, I agree with Jamie. I think it's great in an ideal world, but I don't think parents are always going to be the people who are going to be involved or want to be involved. Unfortunately, it just happens that way. People get busy or there's different circumstances in the home. And so as a public school, we need to be able to address those situations where students need our help regardless if they have the familiar support or not. I also think that there is a stigma still with mental health. And so if we can start building that within our district, that mental health is, is a crisis, we might see some, some progression in getting things to stop.
Thank you. Priscilla?
I, I'm going to take an exception, speaking as someone who homeschooled her children for six years. Parents do not feel welcome in schools. They don't. So I think if there was an open invitation that parents knew that they could come into the school and sit in a classroom and shadow their children, and if children knew that their parents just might pop up unexpectedly, there would be a huge difference in their behavior and their mental health. So I take exception to the, most parents want to be involved.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to add, I, I want to say I definitely agree. There are students that, that don't have that support at home. So they come to school and they need that support. I, I've, and I beg to differ as well. You, some of the social workers may have a caseload of 300. When I worked at Lake, it was 1,100 kids, and I almost knew everybody's name. And I, and I actually knew probably a lot of the situations that went on with students. But when you care, you care all the time, no matter what. It's not a sometimes. And like I said, those kids that don't have that support have to have, be supported as well.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next question, and it goes to Melinda first. If budget cuts were necessary, what are one to three things you would cut to balance the budget?
Oh, wow. You know, just trying to collaborate more with outside agencies. Like even when we're talking about mental health, you know, since we can't afford to be hiring more and more of mental health professionals, collaborating with outside agencies in addition to, like, LE and Youth Service Bureau, adding more into there that funds are coming from elsewhere, would be one thing that I would think about. You know, the, the boundary thing, that could be something we could look at. I know with question two, we do have a lot of space available in our schools. We have some schools that are very below capacity and some schools that are above capacity. So we could look at, you know, how we can re-boundary the different schools to utilize the spaces that we have. I really can't think of a, a third thing other than maybe saving on the money on the, the, oh. Sorry, I've been told to stop.
And she got the stops on you. Question now goes to Satania Moore.
I'll just say, you know, it's tough to make budget cuts no matter what. But what I know is that, that programming and, like I said, students learning differently, they have to have different opportunities to learn. So for me, it would definitely be a no to programs like music, like band athletics, because kids have to feel empowered. They have to, it's a strength-based thing. They have to feel proud of themselves to excel academically. So for me, cutting things would be hard. I would have to know a little bit more about what's allocated to where to really be able to dig in and give my true opinion of that. So I, I wouldn't want to just identify certain things if I'm not aware of the situation.
Thank you. Question now goes to Jamie Kokizel.
I, I attended a meeting a little while back where one of our East Ridge teachers was at the meeting, and, and he's, he had a great idea, actually, that we should, our, our buildings really only get used for a portion of the day, and what about the rest of the day? You know, could we rent that out to communities for use? I don't know if that's possible. I'm just going, piggybacking off of what he, his idea. I thought it was a great idea to, like, earn money as a district. We, we have all these buildings that don't get used for quite a few hours a day. I would also want to look at the achievement and integration program and how much that costs for us to be a part of. We choose to be a part of that program, and I just wanted to see, is that working? Is it paying off? We've been a part of it since 2018, I think I said, earlier. I'm pretty sure it's 2018, and we, again, has, has it been working? Did I say three buildings? And, I mean, that goes with DEI also, and looking at, is that working? And social emotional learning and all the programs that we're putting together for teachers.
Question now goes to Molly Schaefer.
So as far as budget cuts, I, I also would like to look more into where things are allocated at this point in time. But just coming in from more of an outside perspective, I would say that we need to utilize what we have right now. So I believe looking at the boundaries and really utilizing the buildings that we have and making sure that those are in use and, and up and running, I think that would be the first one that I would look at. I also think some of the programming, I know we're adopting some really great curriculum, I will say that. But I also don't want to take that away from our educators. I mean, our educators are, go to school to get trained on how to teach and I, I know our students the best. And so I would want to empower a lot of our educators to be able to actually start teaching and using their, their own strengths in the different modalities of learning in order to keep moving, moving forward that way. And then finally, I think the other, the other thing that I would cut is probably some of the, the additional upgrades.
Thank you. Question now goes to Simi.
Sure. So one thing people should understand with budget cuts is that labor, education is a labor-intensive industry. And so when we talk about budget cuts, we are talking about people's jobs, and we're talking about the people who are working with our students in the classroom. And so this is something that is a, we have to be really, you know, not, not And so this is something that is a, we have to be really, you know, not, not cavalier when we answer this. In 2021, we cut about $10 million of spending in the district. And we cut lots of programs that were very popular. We cut elementary band and orchestra. We cut paraprofessionals. I mean, we cut a lot of things that I think people would not consider fat, that they would consider meat. One of the things that is a pretty, one of the more relatively painless changes we could make is implementing boundary adjustments across the entire district that would allow us to equalize class sizes across district, especially in elementary. We've got some schools with very small class sizes and some schools with very large class sizes. This would allow us to spend our money per teacher more efficiently and money per school more efficiently. The other thing we can do is start looking at programs and making sure that they're developing the return on, on investment that we have. One of those programs that we cut was reading recovery, which did not deliver the returns that we would have expected.
Question now goes to Anthony Marmood.
So I'm hearing here that we can, we can readjust our borders to, because we have so much space in our schools. But earlier, we have to pass number one because we need to expand our schools. We have to spend this money to expand schools. We're out of room. And now, everybody's saying that if we just adjust our borders, we'll be okay. That's how we can solve a problem. If that's the case, yeah, that's great. Let's do that. Let's do that before we pass millions and millions of dollars. Let's get that taken care of. Another thing that I'd like to see is, we're, we seem to be a little administrative heavy on the top. Maybe we take a look at all the administration that we have and we look at how much we can cut out of there. Instead of cutting things that we need for our students and cutting teachers and cutting programs, let's start cutting the fat from the top. Work our way down.
Thank you. Question now goes to Ryan Clark.
Oh, thank you. I'm not sure I can really answer this question given it the, the due diligence that it really should because I'm not involved in budget making ultimately as an outsider here. There are a couple of things that come to mind. One would be kind of looking at the administrative side and, you know, where are we putting our money up on top? I think what Simi said is really good. We should be looking at, we should always be auditing ourselves. We should be auditing the programs that we're using. Are we getting the return on investment? Are we seeing the test scores go up? Are we seeing kids be happy? Are we seeing less emotional issues or mental health issues or whatever the case is? So programs should be looked at and viewed skeptically to see if we put this money forward, are we getting what we want? And I think that would be the basis for making budget adjustments. I can't really say without knowing what's all in the budget because I'm not on the school board. Please vote for me. When I'm on the school board, that's exactly what I'll do. I'll go through and look at all those things very skeptically with, to make sure that the programs that we fund are really for the education of the students. First and foremost, then the teachers, then the administrators.
Thank you. Question now goes to Chad Borseth.
Thank you. With vision, budget cuts should never sneak up on you. You know, usually there's a lot of predictors that something's coming. As an experienced educator in the district in St. Paul, time waste, if you were to, you know, ask the teachers to identify tasks that they spend their time on, probably they'd come up with a list of, you know, 100 different tasks. Probably the top five have no impact on student achievement. We need to change that. Ms., Ms. Putnik?
Putnik, yep.
You, you had mentioned class size. You know, class size, the data says that up until K through third, third, third grade, those are the primary benefits of small class sizes. This is very, the extent literature is very consistent on this. We got to stop using one ratio size for all grades. There's a significant instructional investment in that time. And lastly, I think we need to look at our indirect labor. Many of these people hold additional licenses, special ed licenses, teaching licenses. We can use those to backfill need areas.
Thank you. Question now goes to Priscilla Dimbo.
Coming from the military, when they talk about cutting the defense budget, they're not looking to knock off how many battleships or aircraft carriers or airplanes or whatever. Those cuts hit the boots-on-the-ground service people, you know, our, what, what we get. So I'm really careful with budget cuts when we're talking about budget cuts. But I do think that we could start with, I think we are very administration top-heavy. I think there are some redundancies in the system that we should look at. Redoing the boundaries so that we, we can level out the classroom sizes would be a good thing. But we have to be able to audit ourselves. And more frequently than what I perceive to be every five years or every 10 years, it should not take five years to know if a program is failing or not.
Thank you. Does anyone have any additional comments? Yes, Melinda?
Yeah, I just for one want to clarify what I believe Anthony said about the, the boundaries and if we have this space, why are we looking at, you know, adding more for question one? The question one is dealing with our secondary schools and the boundary issues where we have, you know, such a variety of some schools that have less kids and some schools that have a lot more, is dealing with our elementary schools. And that's what question two is about. Community to decide on. And I also want to say that budget cuts, when we did those a couple of years ago, was the hardest thing I've ever had to do as a board member.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to add to echo Melinda's point. The day we cut $10 million from the budget was probably our single worst day on the board. Because it's really, it's an emotional process and it's one of those things that kids, you know, you're making an impact on kids and not necessarily in a good way. One of the things I do want to point out about our administrative costs is that we spend about 3% of our budget on administration in this district. And when we talk about cutting administrators, we're talking about cutting the, the principals. And we have to be sure that when we cut, we can talk about cutting administrators, but their job duties don't go away and we don't want to push those duties onto teachers.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll move on to the next question and it goes to Ryan Clark first. As a school board member, who will you represent and why?
I'd represent the children because that's what the school board is really for to, you know, public, public education is about the children first and foremost. That's just really what it's about. So if I were, when I'm elected to the school board, I have a duty to, to serve the best interests of all of the kids. All of the kids that live in our district, which is a very diverse community, both in, in origin, but also in principles and morals and worldviews. So my role on the school board is to serve the children first. We do that through social policy governance on the school board level to put policies in place that are neutral and non-biased and non-ideologically driven so that they can affect the change that we need for all of the kids in the school district. Not certain groups, not these groups or those groups, but all kids.
Thank you. Question now goes to Priscilla Dimbo.
Wow. I think my focus would be on the end user. Focusing on the kids is the beginning of the process. And yes, they're important and we need to do that. But we have an end user, our military, our private sector, our senior citizens. All of these people are consumers of the product, i.e. the students that we are putting out. And they're not getting what they deserve. So if we start looking at creating the best product for the consumers who will be using these, these students as, as, as military people, as business owners, as entrepreneurs, as whatever, we have to make them the best that they can be. So my focus would be on the end user. Out of that tells me how best to take care of the children.
Thank you. Question now goes to Chad Borseth.
Yeah, softball question. It's the students. You know, nothing would make me more happy than in June to be shaking the hands with some students that I work very closely with. It's my motivation to run. It's, it's, it's 100% my motivation. And in doing so, I made a pledge that I'm going to remain a nonpartisan, you know? This is a really difficult decision, me being a union. That endorsement and others. But I wanted to make sure that I am dead bullet, right? I can't think of the word to say. I'm set on the, on students as a number one priority. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Question goes to Anthony Marmood.
Was the question that we're, we're, who are we representing?
As a school board member, who will you represent and why?
Okay. As a school board member, I would represent the parents. Parents are the ones that are going to be paying the taxes. The citizens of this county, they're paying the taxes. They're the ones that we're answerable to. Now, of course, the children are going to be the most important thing, but we have to answer to the parents first. We have to talk to them. We have to find out what they expect out of the school districts. If they, if we don't have parental engagement into the students, then we're beating our head against the wall. We have to have the parents behind us. We have to talk to the parents. Let them in on every decision. Help, help them to help us make the decisions. That's who I would, that's who I would be representing. I would focus on the children though.
Thank you. Question goes to Melinda Dolez.
Yeah, it's the students. It's all about the students. Our schools are all about our students. Our parents are an important partnership involved in that. But really, when it comes down to it, our schools are here for our students, our teachers are here for our students, our staff are here for our students. Our school buses are here for our students. The school board is here for our students. So everything's about the students. And really, you know, ensuring that each and every individual child receives what they need to be able to reach their full potential is what our public schools are all about. And secondary after the students would be our teachers. They're the ones that are there that are teaching our students. So we need them in order for our students to succeed. After that would be the rest of the school staff and then our community.
Thank you. Question goes to Jamie Kukaisel.
Yes, so I'm not a teacher. I'm not in the school district. I have my children in private school right now. So I think that that allows me the ability to be neutral in my decision-making. It means that I'm not worried that a teacher or a school may, you know, treat my children differently, which some may say, well, that's, that's horrible for you to say, but I have heard that that is a concern why people run for school board. They're worried that their children will be treated differently. So I would represent the community. I like what both Priscilla and Ryan said about the serving, you know, it's a cyclical cycle. You know, we, we have our, our students, we have our families. Those grow into, those children grow into working individuals and our, we need to be producing competent, productive citizens in our communities and in the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. The question now goes to Simi Putnik.
Sure. So I'm with Melinda and with Chad, you know, students come first. And that's the entire reason we do what we do. That's the whole reason for being on a school board. That's the whole reason for having a school district. We have 19,000 students in this district and we need to help them become good citizens who can learn from their mistakes and solve problems and navigate challenges out in the world. It's very important that we listen to their voices. We know that when we listen to student voices and when students have ownership in their education, they have higher educational outcomes, that they have higher academic achievement. And so everything we can do to prioritize students really benefits them and ultimately benefits the rest of us. They are our top priority.
Thank you. Question now goes to Molly Shaver.
I agree. Students are our top priority. I also think our educators and staff are our top priority. They are the individuals who are with our students on a day-to-day basis. So I think as a school board member, I would definitely put students and our educators and staff as the top priority, listening to them and representing what they need in order to be successful. I think secondary, then the community and our taxpayers are, are next. They, they are helping to inform what we need to know from an outside perspective as well. So you have your internal people, you have your students and your educators and staff on the inside, and then has a collaborative partnership. You can have the community and taxpayers together, working together to make sure that we are actually representing what we need in this district.
Thank you. Question now goes to Satania Moore.
So first of all, my website is www.sataniaforstudents.com. It's all about the students, but it's about our educators because they teach the students. But then it, it comes to our families. Everything starts at home. And then it goes to community. Now, I'm speaking from a place as, as an educator because my professional and ethical responsibilities as an educator is to teach students. But I'm also speaking as a mother. I have 11th grader at East Ridge as well. I'm also speaking as a community member because I'm a homeowner in the area. I'm speaking from my heart because what led me to do this is the love that I've, I've seen from these families year after year. And it's important to support them. So for me, I'll be that voice. As they, as many families know from coming in contact with them at Lake for all those years, I will speak up for what's important for our students.
Thank you. That was our last question. We're going to be moving on to closing statements now. But there's one thing that I would like you to cover in closing statements. And that is what motivates, what's motivating you to run for the school board and why you are the best person to be elected. So we'll start with the closing statements and we're going to start with Anthony Marmood.
All right. Well, I had a whole closing statement planned out, but you can't throw a wrench in that. So why am I the best person for you to vote for? I'm honest. I have integrity. I will listen to what you have to say and we will come up with solutions together. The problem that we're having in our school right now is we do not have our family engaged in their child's learning. We need to get our families engaged. We need to have a school board that will listen to the parents, understand the problems that the parents are having. We have to figure this out. Our students are the most important thing for our future. Now, I'm going to have to use social security to live, so we need these kids to work. So that's why I think I would be the best because I am going to listen to families. Thank you very much. Vote for Anthony Marmood.
Thank you. The question now goes to Simi Putnik.
Sure. Thanks so much again for putting this together. I really appreciate this opportunity. You know, our district is changing rapidly. Our cities are growing. We've got lots of different students coming from many backgrounds and experiences and we need to ensure that they are all given the tools that they need to thrive. And I'm really committed to working with the community to get the best outcomes for all of our students and our district, that our parents, our teachers, our community can work together as a team to ensure each of our students reaches their full potential. And you can find out more about me at votesimie833.com and, or find me on Facebook or on Instagram. I just believe that the work we've been doing is really important for students and I want to continue this work and make sure that we can make a difference for our kids going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Closing statement now from Chad Borseth.
Thank you. There's a lot of representation in, in our schools and that the budget works with. And everybody wants to get their part of the pie. And often I think sometimes the students lose out. I don't want to be real negative, but I was, you know, coming out of COVID, we lost buses to some students and I lost some students because they didn't have buses. As a parent, last year, my bus got canceled. These aren't commitments that put, you know, the needs of our students first. Sorry for going a little bit negative there, but it's, it was important to me because I saw it. You know, after tonight, listening to everyone talk, I think we're well-represented and I feel very comfortable with any of you being on the school board and I hope to join you. I think if elected, I'll bring some humility, maybe a little sense of humor to our school board. I think that's okay. We need to have some light times. And yeah, I want to thank you all for a wonderful evening and let's get out there and vote South Washington.
Thank you. Now with our closing statement, Priscilla Dimbo.
Yeah, there used to be a time where regardless of what their home background was, there used to be a time when you could go into any school and understand that regardless of what was happening, every student was going to have a standard to live up to. Every teacher was going to have a standard by which they would operate. And every school system had a societal standard that propelled us to excellence. Again, I'm not a politician. I'm just a grassroots person whose circumstances have made it so this is where I'm putting down roots. And since I'm putting down roots here, I want to do whatever I can to see to it that we are an exceptional school district. Exceptional students, exceptional teachers, exceptional parents. So if that sounds like something that... exceptional parents. So if that sounds like something that resonates with you, then please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Now with his closing statement is Ryan Clark.
Hello. Thank you for hosting this. This was actually kind of fun. I was a little bit nervous about this to start, but yeah, it's pretty cool. So in my view, public schools' first and foremost mission is to teach our kids academics, to ensure that they are independent and capable adults who are able to think for themselves. Bias towards a political ideology is antithetical to what we call liberal education. Indeed, the hallmarks of liberal education include free and open debate of all subjects that progress human knowledge. We have a diverse community, not only of origin or attribute, but also of experience, values, principles, and worldview. A truly diverse and inclusive education, that mission focuses on the concepts that apply to all students equally. And this is why we should focus on academic achievement, building of character, aptitude, behavior, perseverance, and merit-based system instead of having some things that maybe I would think are not so much. So a vote cast for me provides the opportunity to restore balance and direct the school board to be achievement-focused, parent-centered, and fiscally responsible. So vote for Ryan Clark for District 833 and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now with their closing statement, Melinda Dolez.
Yeah, I believe I'm the best person for the job because I already have four years of hard work and experience on the board and I'd like to continue that hard work and work for our students. The mission of Soul Washco Schools is to educate students for success. In order to do that, we need to continue to provide our students with a school climate where they can be physically and emotionally safe, have programs that support and empower all students, and ensure that every single student can receive what they need to reach their full potential. I'll continue to support academic excellence, mental health and special education support, equity and inclusion, and fiscal responsibility. So really, a vote for me is a vote for all students.
Thank you. Now with their closing statement, Molly Schaefer.
So I have a passion for public school education. I graduated from public school. My children will be attending public school in the district. And I want to ensure that we are providing absolutely all the tools necessary for our students to thrive in this district, both academically and personally. Education is not a one-size-fits-all and all of the research and best practices show that. And so I want to ensure that we have different options for students so they are able to accomplish what they set out to do with their lives. You know, I've worked with educators and students from pre-K through 12th grade as well as undergrads and graduate students. I have a doctorate in educational leadership and a master's in multicultural teaching and learning. With those, as well as what I'm doing currently from the other side where I'm working with colleges and universities, I see that there's other opportunities to really create an environment for our students to be able to succeed, whether it is within the academics or personally, to keep growing and be the problem solvers to help with our challenges of the future.
Thank you. Now with their closing statement, Satania Moore.
Well, I have to say, I worked for this district for many years, supporting students, families, and staff as a liaison implementing diversity in meaningful ways while representing equity and community engagement, along with encouraging academic excellence for all students, hands-on. So my decision to pursue this role as a school board representative was inspired by all of the families that I've, I've met over the years. And I want to be that public, excuse me, I want to be that public servant that is the voice for them. Me knowing, like I said, demonstrating that loyalty to our district for 15 years, to our students, to our families, is very important. And my connection to all of those families is why voting for Satania, Satania for Students is important. So if you want a person that actually has worked for the district, has that insight of what actually happens to our students, that person that has a family, a student in the district, I support our community. I support our district and our students. Vote for Satania.
Thank you. Now with their closing statement, Jamie Kukaisel.
Thank you. I think that I am the best candidate for the position of school board in South Washington County because I have, I can look at the big picture. I've had my kids in the, is my microphone on? I've had my kids in the, in the schools for 10 years. I have that experience. I still keep in touch with all the teachers and do many, do quite a few interviews with, in facilitating the research that I do for my blog. So I'm very well-versed in what is going on in, at the school board level. But I also have the perspective of the, what's going on in the rest of the state. I talk to parents from all over the state. I'm a part of parent groups all over the state. I'm, I also have kids in private schools. I talk to kids, parents who have their kids in private schools and homeschools and all different models of learning. And I think that that benefits us in the long run to produce the best that we can produce, to humble ourselves sometimes a little bit, and to look at all models of learning. Thank you.
Thank you. The league thanks the candidates for their participation, the South Washington County School District for the use of their facilities, SWC TC for taping this forum, our league volunteers, and you, the audience, for your attendance and interest. Let your voice be heard by voting on November 7.
That concludes our forum for the candidates running for District 833 School Board. Thank you to the candidates for choosing to run for office and for your participation in tonight's forum. Thank you to all those who viewed the forum live tonight or who viewed the recording between now and the election. And thank, we wanted to say this is the last of two candidate forums that we're hosting this election season. The candidate forums are one of our most important services to the community. Last year, we had over 2,900 views of our forums. The last forum was the St. Paul Park City Council and that replay, as well as the replay of this forum, will both be available on the SWC TC YouTube channel and periodically will be rebroadcast on Channel 18, or I'm sorry, 16. Please make every effort to become informed about the candidates running for all the offices on this year's ballot and most importantly, get out and vote.